We didn't write you out of the vote.
Oh, the schoolboy?
Mm-hmm.
Joe, just Jim Baldwin.
We saved this, Joe. We saved this seat.
Oh, yes. Mr. Sheridan, request was made to move your camera down a little bit further. It's a little bit too close to the trustees when they make note of things of that nature. Move it down to that side.
They're afraid I'm gonna record their note-taking. Clowns.
Do you need your case, sir?
Unless you're gonna steal it.
I guess she's gonna steal it.
Oh, boy.
I put my camera there every meeting. Oh, you're too close. You might be recording their note-taking.
Like it's such a secret. Like it's such a secret for notes.
What?
There's a ramp around the back of the building.
Oh, someone's blocking the ramp. The back of the building.
Who would possibly block a handicap ramp?
Someone very selfish.
All right, good evening, everyone. Sam and the flags will go. Thank you.
... in the United States of America, and to the real father, which stands on a nation under God, in the temple with mercy and justice.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26, 2018 Village of Chestnut Ridge Board of Trustees Meeting, Democracy.
Go louder, please.
Welcome. Couple of quick things with regard to my mayor's report. I had an opportunity to go down to Ramapo for a grant consultants' meeting, part of the Rockland County Shared Services Program through Walney. We had an opportunity to speak with a couple of consultants with regard to possibly sharing services for grants and various funding options out there. It was a very productive meeting, and we appreciate Ramapo inviting us over there. There was also mayors from Sloughsford, Wesley Hills, Suffolk, and Kazer. It was a very good and productive meeting. Our shredding event that we had a couple of weeks ago, also a very good event, productive event. We had around sixty folks come out to shred their documents and other items securely and efficiently. And again, we appreciate your coming out, and we thank, again, Par Pharmaceutical for sponsoring the event. Par has been very good. They've sponsored it every year since we've had it. So again, we thank, we thank Par. The, okay. As far as what transpired last month with regard to the, with regard to the village, there were some questions with regard to various properties and the status of saying. Seven Imperial Lane was, there was a complaint at the meeting with regard to trash bins and recycling bins and things of that nature. Property was cleaned up. The code enforcement folks went out to take care of that. Seven Fifty Chestnut Ridge Road, the group that was it, that is in Seven Fifty, maintaining worship services, were in the process of moving out. It is in Village Justice Court, so the Village Justice Court matter was adjourned until May the ninth, and then we will be revisiting that. But all indicia is that the, the organization that has been utilizing that space for worship services is moving out. With regard to Two Thirty-Six Highland, the property was inspected on April the 12th. The property was in violation, a violation that was issued on the 13th of April, and it is set for justice court May 14th. That was brought up also by folks. Thirteen Tyce Court had a complaint with regard to trash bins at the curb and things of that nature. The code enforcement went out, spoke with the property owner, and while it's a little bit cleaner, they're just keeping it on the radar to make sure that they continue to comply. With regard to Two Eighty-Two Acre Town Road, the property was inspected on the 19th and the 20th of April, and everything should be, should be in order there. With regard to Twenty-One Lancaster, that property was posted with a stop work order, and it was actually as of April the 18th, 2016. It is set to go into violation to court. However, what will end up happening with Twenty-One Lancaster, there's been a recommendation by the village engineer that it go to the planning board. So the planning board is going to be addressing Twenty-One Lancaster. Twenty Briar Court, there were complaints about TV cables down. An inspection on the 19th of April showed that there weren't any wires down on the road or on the property. So whatever the issue was, it was taken care of. It was also, the village did receive a petition with regard to one, with regard to Carroll Court. Now, that is also in, a stop work order has been issued for most of what's going on there. And in addition, the village engineer is, is also looking at the application and the plans that were submitted for a, for an additional review. And as a matter of practice, what the, what the village has begun doing is, applications that are coming into the, into village hall are being reviewed by both the building inspector and the village engineer. So now, there is a, we'll say, a second set of eyes with regard to any more applications coming before, before the village. And again, it's more of a built-in suspended approach that there is an, that our village engineer, who usually gets involved anyway, is being involved a little bit sooner rather than later. In addition, as you will see later on in the, in the meeting and on the agenda, we are, we will be reappointing our village engineer and who will also, also be sitting on as our planning board engineer. Which has kind of been the norm, as I always remember it to be, as far as how I practiced. But here in the village, there seems, there was a separate engineer for the planning board and our village engineer, obviously was for the village, but would also be involved in this regard. The village engineer will also be sitting as the planning board engineer, again, for consistency, and I think as a matter of efficiency, that's the way to go. Getting back to Carroll Court, I have to make an observation. And a property owner outside of the owners of the, of the folks that signed the petition had the foresight to say this to me. They sent a separate letter, basically asking that Carroll Court be kept on the radar, be reviewed. They felt as though that there, that perhaps the application that was being submitted and the plans needed further review and things of that nature. And, which is all well and good. And what the salient portion of that letter was, that they did not sign on the petition that was circulated, that had another, initially maybe eight or nine, and then another twenty people. Because they were afraid that other than the dispute with regard to one Carroll, there were accusations in that petition that probably bordered on slander with regard to certain village staff. And these people said in writing, they purposely didn't sign the petition for that reason. That they... I'm sorry, I'll try to speak a little bit louder. That's fine.
It's not fine for us.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I truly appreciate that. So, so these folks, so these folks... Okay, thank you. So, these folks were, were saying how they felt as though that they couldn't sign on the petition because there were certain personal accusations that really weren't appropriate. And I, I have to give them credit, because I have no problem with folks having issues, showing their opposition, or having any comments with regard to what's going on. However, when you sign on petitions that have information that could be slanderous, you're, you're setting yourself up also for potential liability and signing on on it. So what I'm just gonna let you know is, be careful what you sign. If you have an issue, the petition showing that you're not happy with something going on with regard to particular property, that's what we're here for.
Can you be more specific, sir?
No, I can actually, because it could, it could create a, it could create a legal action, and I'm not gonna get myself involved with that, nor the folks that signed it. So anyway, so, excuse me, this is, right now, you'll have an opportunity to speak later on. This is, this, you know, we're gonna have a meeting, hopefully, that's gonna have a little bit of decorum and professionalism. So, so far, we're there. So we're gonna try to keep it that way. So thank you. So, that was with regard to Carroll Court. Now, I, I also have to address a paid advertisement that, while I, I'm not gonna necessarily address the specifics of this paid advertisement, because that's exactly what it is. It's an advertisement. I think it's, it only reinforces, to some degree, some fake news and manufactured hysteria with regard to, in large part, lacking in any factual basis and knowledge of the law with regard to the procedures that this board is following. We have a, a law that is, that we will be proposing to be revised. And New York State law says that. You introduce at a meeting when you're going to have the public hearing on the law. And that's what we will be doing this evening. We will be pinning down a date for the public hearing on the law, which is what the law says we should do. So, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I'm aware, this village board has never tried to sneak any type of laws through. We have never, ever tried to do something without getting input from the citizenry. You may not agree with the ultimate result of what this board decides, but I don't believe anyone could accuse us of trying to foist upon the village anything that hasn't had a fair and open hearing. Now, I feel, and it's now it's my opinion as, as an individual in reading this paid advertisement, that there were factual inadequacy, factual inaccuracies with regard to many different things. You were led to believe that there was no notices sent to agencies or municipalities to comment on this law that we are going to be discussing in June. That is incorrect, and we follow the law with regard to that. The notice of the law went out to the various county agencies, to the neighboring communities, and to the planning board for their comments. We have received thus far comments from Clarkstown and from Rockland County Planning. The planning board, which was given the law in February, requested an extension, because they were unable to assess the law to provide a comment, comments on it. And we had no issue with that. As a matter of fact, that's why we figured that it would be best to have this hearing in June as opposed to May. Because it would also give the planning board an opportunity to have a look at the law, in addition, to give any of the other agencies that perhaps haven't had an opportunity to send it in, even though they're supposed to do it within thirty days, to do it. So, that's why we extended the time period in addition. Also, the planning board by law is supposed to look at proposed laws, not the zoning board. You were led to believe here that how come the zoning board doesn't get a whack at reviewing the law? Well, that's because the zoning board is, may have to sit in judgment and interpret that law. And it's gonna be kind of difficult if you have an arm in writing the law, and then you're gonna sit back and have to sit in judgment of that law. So, this is not something that the village decided, oh, you know what, we're gonna keep the ZBA out of the loop. Doesn't happen that way. The law says that the planning board gets to review the law. The zoning board isn't supposed to review the law. That adds, again, inaccurately. I, I also have to, I also have to make reference to that, and you will see eventually through the, the hearing with regard to the law, that religious uses are already permitted. They're already permitted by federal law. ARLOPA, the Religious Land Uses Act, allows certain types of religious practices in neighborhoods. We are not, excuse me, you'll have, further, you'll have opportunity to speak if you choose to speak. For the purposes of the record, we need only one person to speak at a time. The federal law states how people can worship and the free exercise of worship. So, we are not, as a village, coming up with anything new. We are not. What the purpose of this new law will be is to further evolve in the current law that we have to make it, to make it user-friendly with regard to the applications that come before the village, okay? We do not want, want to run afoul of federal state laws that are gonna expose the village to what could be substantial fines if we don't do the right thing. And we are going to do the right thing. And that is the purpose also of the new law and how we will develop that new law. Now, you'll, you'll, this really isn't gonna be question and answer, okay? It'll be later. Okay, it'll be later. I'm, about, miss ma'am, I, this is, and you're welcome to feel how you feel. I am, I am interpreting this advertisement, because this advertisement, this advertisement was, I feel, an affront to the village as far as what's going on. And I feel as though, as a representative of the village, I need to set the record straight. You could still disbelieve me. You do not have to believe one word that I say, but I am going to say it, okay? Just as it's, just as it's the person, just as it's the right of the person or persons who pay for this advertisement, okay? It's also, this board's right, it's also this board's right to address it, so that all eighty-three hundred people in this village knows what's going on. All eighty-three hundred people, okay? Now, that having been said, okay? We will be setting a public hearing for that law, and it will be in June. Now, that will conclude my report. At this point, you folks are welcome to address the agenda items, okay? Now, I am going to tell you, council, just relax one second, please. I understand that a lot of you want to speak on the neighborhood worship law. And my suggestion is to do it in June when we have our public hearing. I'm not gonna tell you not to do it tonight. We will be, we will be here for as long as we need to be here, and I promise you that. However, for the sake of clarity and for the sake of efficiency, we're going to have a special meeting that's gonna be just for the hearing on this law. However, if you still would like to speak on it, council, if you still would like to make your presentation, you're welcome. But I'm gonna tell you right now, it will be just that. It will be a presentation. We're probably not gonna be answering any questions. We do not have our planner here.
Excuse me? Well, I don't, I, I want, I want a vague command. I'm standing. There are many people that are standing.
Excuse me, counselor, I'm, I'm speaking.
I know, and you said, "counsel," you can speak then, so I stood up. There's nothing offensive about me standing. Is it, does that, does it somehow disrupt the meeting to have me stand?
But this part is on agenda items only.
Correct. I always speak on agenda.
Are you finished? Thank you. So, as I was saying, the, my hope is that if you have things to say with regard to the public, uh, neighborhood worship, that we do it at the meeting on the, on the 28th of June. I also would ask that, because of the large number of people here, that you limit your comments to five minutes, okay? Now, if after five minutes, you felt as though you still haven't covered all you wanted to cover, I would just ask that you yield for the next person. And then if you want to come back after everyone has had an opportunity to speak, you would be more than welcome to have an opportunity to speak, okay? So, and as... As a point of information, sure, first you know that?
We've said this before at other meetings. Whether you believe it or not, we are you. We have the same concerns that you have. I have the same. You can shake your head what you want, but I have the same concerns that you have about our neighborhoods, about our community, and about how we handle it. There is nothing that you can complain about that probably I don't have the same complaints. We're your elected representatives, and we take that seriously. We have done nothing to, in any way, bring up any concept that we haven't taken the public trust that you've given to us seriously. I will tell you, this was not on the agenda tonight. We had no intention of discussing it tonight. This law is an early proposed law, proposed law, proposed change to the law, is in its early stages. We haven't gotten comments from everybody. We haven't gotten comments from the planning board, our own planning board, on it. That's significant. The law may change before we even present it to you necessarily. Again, probably won't, but we may leave it the way it is to get your comments, because we want your comments. And how do we orderly get your comments? We're setting up a special meeting, as the mayor said, where everybody could actually get a seat, all right? So you're not stuffed in a corner, you're not stuffed in a hallway, and you're not stuffed in a way that you can't hear us, because I want you to hear us. But more importantly, I want you to hear each other. And I want you to be able to get up orderly and speak about it. But it was not on this agenda. It accomplishes, in my judgment, nothing to discuss this law tonight. You can. Go ahead. You wanna do it, go for it. But it's not gonna make a difference. The time to discuss it is when we've heard from other people, when we can tell you what they've said, and then we can take your comments, listen to your comments, and then discuss your comments. Right now, we're not discussing anything. This is just, you wanna take it during the, we, at one point in the meeting, we open it up for the public to make any comment they want about anything. The first thing that will happen is that we will take comment on only the agenda items. So if it's not on the agenda, and this proposed new law is not on the agenda, and we had no intention of discussing it tonight, you're not gonna be able to discuss it at that point, but you're gonna discuss it later, if that's what you want. But I would ask you to discuss it when we can actually discuss it with you, when we're going to discuss it with you. And that's on June 28th. Now, I guess, some people are shaking their head. I don't have no idea why, but you can tell me later. We are not trying to stop you from debating. Debate all you want. This is just not the meeting for it, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, at this juncture, we will hear on agenda items only. Counsel, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Mogul, 457 Broadway Street 16A, Monticello, New York, for coupon of Chestnut Ridge. Obviously, I'm here to speak about agenda item number 25, which is Resolution 2018-48, the resol, the proposal to schedule a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code that relates to places of worship in the village. I'm not going, I'm not going to use up my full five minutes. I'm not gonna belabor the point. I agree that this is early in the process. What I do have, what I would like to present to the board, is a report that's been prepared by a certified planner. The, the report addresses a number of issues that will have to be addressed by the board at some point. And I would hope that it would act as a guide for some of the issues that are gonna arise. So with your permission?
Mr. Mogul, may I give it to the village clerk, and she'll distribute it for me? Thank you.
I believe this, the report is gonna speak for itself, and I'm sure the community's gonna speak for itself, this evening, obviously. But I, I think this evening, the board should at least preliminarily classify this action as a type-one action, okay? The, I think the, the report will, will spell that out, but this falls clearly within the regulations as a type-one action. Type-one actions that involve twenty-five acres, affect twenty-five acres or more, are type-one actions. This affects the entire village. It's five square miles, almost five square miles. And I think that addressing this, if the board were to address this as a type-one action, to classify it at least preliminarily, I think it would be an indication that the board takes seriously the environmental impact that this will have, okay? There's a serious environmental impact that, that this will have. The way that it's currently designed, you're talking about permitting, permitting the neighborhood, or pardon, residential places of worship, other places of worship within nine... well, pardon me, residential places of worship, other places of worship within 90% of the village, okay? That, that is a vast expansion from what exists currently right now. I take, I, I will, I, I don't believe, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that your, your, your definition, your explanation of Arlupa is correct, but that's something for another day. You know, I, I, I'm gonna suspect that there're gonna be a number of people that are gonna be quite angry, and it's quite suspicious this evening. And I think they're going to be angry and suspicious, because although you indicated that you don't believe that anything was snuck through, it's, the, the resolution, the, the report that was provided was dated from February of 2017, I think that, unless that was a typographical error...
It was, Mr. Mogul, and they were told it was a typographical error.
Okay, so there was, so there was only one month of, of negotiations before this document was produced?
Mr. Mogul, make your statement, I'm not gonna go into a back and forth with you, you're welcome to make your statement.
Fine, in any event, in any event, the, this item, okay, was negotiated behind closed doors, okay? It, it had, it was only one segment of the community that had a voice, okay? And then it was presented, it was put on an agenda two days before the meeting. People are suspicious, people are angry, and they have every right to be. As proposed, this house of worship law could result in, in residential places of worship, multiple ones, having multiple services on the same day on the same street. If you don't think that that's gonna have a profound impact on the environment, then you're not paying attention, okay? I, I'm asking you, preliminarily categorize this as a type one. Do, do your EIS, prepare the EAF, all of these items, do it properly, because up to now, it doesn't appear that it's being done properly, it doesn't appear that people are being heard. That's all I can do.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. We have to let the record reflect that if I don't respond, it's not necessarily that I agree, but again, thank you. Anyone else on the agenda? Just name and address for the record, sir.
Tom DeRoberts, 9 New Echotown Road.
Good evening, sir.
It seems to me that religious beliefs, no matter who they are, or where they are, or what they are, has no bearing on structures that are built in a community, residential...
Sir, I, I...
I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making it...
But it's really not on the agenda, sir.
My comment, I'm gonna say, how many people do you need to push down a vote with respect to a community change, sir? Simple, simple question. Do you need the community here that's all against variations in religious beliefs?
Thank you, thank you. On, on, on the agenda, on the agenda.
I just wanna make a point, that this...
Point taken.
This is why we're all here.
I, I understand, sir, thank you. Name and address to the record, Mr. Leibelson.
Jerry Leibelson, 31 Midway Road. Just on the parade law, did you, is that brought up? Okay, I'm pleased to see that you reconsidered the issue of advanced notification to residents, and you now specify a five...
Right.
So, I'm pleased, and my only question is, how did you come up with five days as opposed to seven, 10, or 14?
We tried to pick something that was reasonable, we figured five is a reasonable time. It's, it's almost a week's notice, and it's, it's, admittedly, with some, it was just a, a, a time period, and we kinda just figured that would be good. If we find that we need a little bit more time as this gets utilized, then we'll, then we'll amend it. There was no major rhyme or reason, other than trying just to be fair and reasonable.
It could be tweaked, it could be tweaked.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the positive comments. Anyone else wish to speak on the agenda? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to close on the agenda. Thank you, trustee.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the agenda, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Name and address for the record, if it's on the agenda, we'll still hear you, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
My name is Yosef Frozen, I live at 2016 Jean Lane. I grew up in Spring Valley, where the same issue was addressed 28 years ago when they wanted to make legal the synagogues. And all we came up with over there was that as long as you do it by code and by law, it should be legalized. So, I asked the village to please give us the codes and the law, and we will follow that, and you should make it legal.
Thank you, and again, we'll have an opportunity to further vet that law in June. Thank you for your comments, sir. All right. Just name and address, but make sure it's just on the agenda, folks, if it, if, if, if it's, if it's for or against the, the law itself, I would ask then if maybe hold those comments to the end, all right? But if it has to do with the agenda, please come on right up and name and address to the record.
David Speira, 16 Pine Hall Court.
Good evening, sir.
I would like to thank the mayor for proposing this new law about the house of worship. Right now, it's falling for five acres. I think that's ridiculous, that's not fair for any religion, not for, whether it's Jewish, Muslim, or, or Christian, and I wanna thank for, the village for coming forward with a new law, that makes a lot more sense.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else on the agenda? Okay, now, we'll entertain a motion to close the public meeting on the agenda. I think we had trustee Cohen already moved, and then trustee Miller seconded, all those in favor? I oppose, there being none, thank you very much. I will entertain a motion with regard to approving the minutes of the meeting of March 22nd. Thank you, trustee Valentine, thank you, Deputy Mayor Brock for the second, all those in favor? I oppose, there being none, again, thank you very much. So noted, trustee Cohen. At this point, we will open the public hearing with regard to the tentative budget for fiscal year one, June 1st, 2018, through May 31st, 2019. Anyone wish to speak any further on the budget, we all, I think we kinda, there's been no change since the last go-round. The average, we, we stayed within cap, folks, you're not, if at the most, maybe you'll see a $9 increase over the whole year. Just no questions?
I'll move Resolution 2018...
Well, first, we gotta close the public hearing, can we, can we close the public hearing? Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brock, and thank you, trustee Miller for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, there being none, thank you very much. Now, I will entertain Resolution 2018-23 approving the 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget for the village of Chestnut Ridge. Thank you, deputy mayor Brock for the motion, thank you, trustee Valentine for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, there being none, thank you very much. We will continue the public hearing with regard to the proposed Parade, Processions, and Special Events law. As Mr. Leibelson pointed out during his comments on the agenda, we did revise the law to provide a, a five-day notice period. Does anyone wish to speak any further on that law?
No, I think we tweaked it.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the Parades, Processions, and Special Events law. Thank you, trustee Cohen, and thank you, trustee Valentine for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, there being none, thank you.
I'll move Resolution 2018-24 to adopt the negative deck.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, right, so we needed that resolution, the negative deck, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. May I move that?
Yes.
Trustee Cohen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, there being none, thank you very much. Yeah, it was, I guess, just looking at my notes, that law was, again, in, as, as evidence of how the laws start off, started off one way, four meetings later, it ended up another way. So, again, we do, you know, we do hear, we do hear you folks, we do. At this juncture, it's my pleasure to, and it's my appointment, to reappoint trustee Joan Brock as deputy mayor, if she so chooses to accept.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, deputy mayor Joan Brock. Okay, actually, you know what, this is one more, I don't even need help. Yeah, but thank you.
Says we'll move to 20, we need to get Joan Brock?
No, that's...
Nope, where they...
Number seven.
At number eight, we're going to reappoint, if she so chooses, our village clerk Florence Mandell as village clerk and registrar of vital statistics. And I would seek Resolution 2018-25 confirming my resident, confirming my appointment.
We keep her in suspense?
No, some of...
Thank you, deputy mayor Brock, trustee Valentine for the second, all those in favor? Oppose, there being none, thank you very much. Again, with our okay, I would reappoint Liz Chaney, our village treasurer, deputy registrar of vital statistics, and who follow, I would entertain Resolution 2018-26 approving my appointment.
I'll move.
Thank you, deputy mayor Brock for the motion, and thank you, trustee Valentine for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, there being none, thank you very much.
See, if people are leaving, that's fine.
Oh, but I wanna make sure you understand that we will have a hearing on this proposed law, a special meeting on June 28th, and I hope you all come out and give us your comments. So, if you're leaving now, you're not gonna miss anything, because you're gonna be able to make your comments then.
Right, I, I know, the, the agenda has the 21st.
That's why I wanted to correct it.
Let me, let me, let me give you, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt our, our, the chain of events here, just for one second. The whole idea was to have this, to have the meeting on a regular meeting date, so folks would know when we're meeting. We, when we went to go book the, the middle school, we were told that since June 22nd is the last day of school, June 21st was no longer available. So, they were kind enough to allow us to come the following Thursday, which is the 28th. So, the meeting's still gonna be on a Thursday, but it will be on the 28th, and it's gonna be at 7:30. Again, because since we're gonna have, I anticipate a large, a large number of folks, that we will have an opportunity, because we still have to be at it by 10 o'clock. So, we'll start at 7:30, we'll go to 10, and then if we need to continue the meeting, we will, all right? So, again, for those folks leaving, I'm sorry, at the time, we, we were looking at the 21st of June, but then the school told us no. So, so it's gonna be on the 28th of June, thank you.
Now, what time?
7:30, 7:30. And, and again, it'll be on the website, and we'll remind you again at our May meeting that it's gonna be in June, but, again, as trustee Miller said, for those folks who are leaving who might, who might not have realized. Now, getting back to the agenda.
Regular meeting, we want...
Yeah, our regular meeting is still on the 21st of June, but that has nothing, so, that has nothing to do with the special meeting, so. Next, we'll, we'll go to number 10 on the agenda, which is me reappointing acting village justice William Smith, and I would seek confirmation via Resolution 2018-23.